We should be here, Bob, because I told you wouldn't wait for him.
We should do that. And move, we return to open session, second.
Greckin?
Return back in session.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And move, we adjourn to closed session, second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Kepron? Greckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the folks from Channel Nine meet me at the podium, please? We have a proclamation that says whereas KCAU signed on the air 65 years ago, on March 29th, 1953, as KBTV, the first television station in Suland, and whereas KCAU continues to broadcast, the first two, from the first 2,000-foot tower built in Iowa, was the first Suland television station to broadcast in color and high definition, and whereas KCA broadcast professionals Tim Seaman, Jenna Rensstrom, Fred Hexum, and Jordan Ferby have continued the station's commitment to provide awareness and service to the people of northwest Iowa, northeast Nebraska, and southeast South Dakota, and whereas KCA general manager John Curry and the entire staff continue KCA's tradition of proudly serving all the people in Suland, now therefore I robbery Scott, Mayor of the Sioux City, Iowa, and behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize the 65th anniversary of KCAU nine television in Sioux City and commend this observance to all citizens. Much respect, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Well, it's been, it's been a long, a long journey for the station, as many of you probably heard, we signed on a, a new facility out here, the company that owns this now has made a huge investment in this community, so we look forward to many, many more years of serving the city and the folks of Suland. Thank you.
We'll go on to interviews. Amy Degroot-Hammer, are you in? Oh, there you are, Amy, I didn't see you. Tell us a little bit about, you want to be on the museum board of trustees, so tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name is Amy Degroot-Hammer, I'm a lifelong citizen in Sioux City, and interested in the museum, board of trustees, I kind of grew up going to the museum, it was something my family could do that was free, and I enjoy history, I enjoy keeping our community kind of a nice destination place to come, and I think that the museum is definitely part of that. A friend of mine visited from Des Moines a couple of weeks ago and sent me a message out of the blue and said, hey, that Sioux City Museum's a really neat place, so something I'm interested in being a part of. I have time now to give back to my community, and I'm at the age where I feel like I need to be doing that, so that's kind of why I'm interested.
You're not that old yet, Amy, but. Thanks for applying.
Yeah, thank you for letting me.
All right.
Thanks for your consideration. Okay. Any other questions?
How many openings do we have?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Two openings, yes.
And is this gender balanced?
It is not.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Let you know, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to the consent agenda, which is items through, through 12D. You can consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes requested by a council member. If you want to come up on an item either on the agenda or under citizen concerns, please state your name and address so it can be used for the record. I'll move the consent agenda, second. Three is a reading of the city council minutes of March 19th, 2018. Four is a resolution supporting an IEDA application for the workforce housing tax credit program for 48 South, 4800 Southern Hills Drive. I have a question on these. When we met on these, I thought it was going to be apartments, now they're condos? Or does that matter? It does to me, but.
I think Chris Myers, economic development specialist, I think technically he is going to condo each unit, that's what I've been told, but they are going to be rented out as if they are apartments.
Okay. Okay. And as of today, we've not committed any dig funds to this project.
I've been told that we have not.
I think it was a state program, wasn't it, that required?
Yeah, the, yeah, the, the matching funds for this application are coming from the citywide urban revite, so.
Okay, thank you. Five is a resolution supporting an application by the Sioux City Housing Trust Fund to, six is a resolution awarding a PO to electric pump for the pump at the Whispering Creek wastewater pump station.
I had a question. Mark, just a quick question, if you can help me feel a little more comfortable. I was reading it through and it was just talking about how we can only use one specific type of pump, that's why there's, there was one bid, and that's because this one type pump is only through, sold through this manufacturer, is that, I'm reading that correctly?
That's, that's correct.
Is it worrisome at all that we have to use this one specific brand of pump here? Is that normal? I'm just asking because I don't know.
Right. Mark Sims, UTE's director, the, every lift station's designed with a certain package, and unfortunately those packages are always designed for certain types of pumps, and so there's really no way of getting around that, you're going to end up with this brand of pump for that lift station when it was designed for its life.
Unless you re-pipe.
Unless you re-pipe and reconfigure a little bit, and there's always costs associated with that, so.
Right, but we've never bid one to see that, right?
We sure can, I think we'll find it's very expensive, but.
Well, see, we don't ever know if we don't ever try, for me, but.
Yeah, we'd, we'd have to hire an engineer to do that, so that's probably why we've not in the past.
The mayor's favorites.
I don't have to have a construction permit from DNR.
Well, when you have zero, one bidder or engineers, it is a coin toss for me, I would admit.
Okay, and, yeah, I mean, to the mayor's point, I mean, just if the cost ever gets too exorbitant, if we can keep open to that, I just, I just never know why.
Sure can, you know, there are multiple pumps in each of these lift stations, and generally you're replacing one at a time.
Yeah.
So you'd be reconfiguring the entire lift station probably to make it work, but we certainly, you know, request proposals from engineers or whatever.
I'm done with taxes, and I'd like you to take me out and show me this pump, because I can't imagine that it ties into the whole system, there's got to be a way to pipe that without redoing everything.
Yeah, they go into a common header.
But that doesn't mean you've got to change everything else in the.
Well, the bolt patterns are the problem, so you'd have to.
I understand.
Yep, happy to do that.
That'd be great.
Thanks, Mark, I appreciate it.
Seven's a resolution inviting proposals for the sale of land with combined CBD central urban renewal area, accepting the proposal of Sioux City brick and tile and fixing the date of the public hearing, the property of Lloyd Boulevard and Days Avenue.
I have a question on this one. Chris, can you just tell me, what are, what are they planning on doing on the other site that they're currently at? Do you know?
They're Chris Myers, economic development specialist, they, in their current location, they do not own it.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're leasing office space and, in that building right now, so.
Okay.
I have a question, the, I know it's a long-term dream of mine that the Viadoc would someday come down, serves no purpose other than, nothing, it doesn't serve a purpose, other than getting over some railroad tracks, which you could accomplish, have you made sure, because there is, there is a preliminary review of that, that this site will not be affected by that?
We've been told that the, that the, the project that you're, that you're talking about is, is so long-term and has not been nailed down as to exact locations and that, that the DOT is comfortable with us moving ahead with, with what we are looking at doing, we verified that again today, they, they would rather us move ahead with what we're doing and not slow down this progress and maybe have to come back for a little bit of right-of-way down the road, but they said it's not worth holding up this project.
Eight are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing areas from 5th to 6th Streets on April 9th for the John Doerr Variety Show. B is a resolution temporarily closing various streets downtown on April 11th for the tolerance week event at the Orpheum Theater. Nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution awarding a consulting services agreement to Snyder and Associates for the Perry Creek Trail Project. B is a resolution waiving the rental fee in the amount of $666,000, $66,666.67 for the use of the garbage shed at the landfill by Gil from November 4th till February 18th. I'd like to make a comment on this problem, it's, it's an issue where we didn't bother to bill Mr. Gil, so to come back 13 years later, the council, and I would agree, doesn't think it's terribly fair, we should have been billing as we went, so that's why this is being waived. Ten are actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A is a resolution approving a settlement of a tort claim and authorizing payment. B is approving change orders numbers five and six and authorizing payments to Subserco for the Jackson Street reconstruction project I need to abstain. Eleven are applications for beer and liquor license, see the list come forward if you have any questions. Twelve are recede of minutes, see the list come forward if you have any question. Anyone to be heard on any of those items, please come forward. Passes four zero thirteen's a hearing for the US HUD Sioux City Consortium, year four action plan, I'll move that, second. Passes four zero fourteen's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications for construction of the city fuel island project. We also. I'll move that. There a second? Second.
No, I'm just looking, I, I thought we had a follow-up question on that, I didn't know if it was answered, maybe it was.
You have one recently, or?
For the last time, council, yeah, from the last time on council had this.
Well, the conversation I remember, and it's not outlined in this one, but it was just about the cost of the pad itself, we were talking about whether that was the 75,000 or whether it was going to be.
Well, that was what the engineer's estimate.
The whole project was like 380 or 350 or something like that.
The engineer's estimate had it at about 75,000 for the foundations of the pad.
Because that, that was the question, and I, or that's the question I had outstanding, is I just wanted to make sure that 75,000 was the only part of this investment that's not mobile, should we move it next time? Which you're telling me is true.
Well, I mean, there's, there's communication wiring and all that, but that, that would not be, that would have to be redone if we moved him out.
All right, thanks.
I don't know if that was yours, sorry, that was.
No, I think it might have been, I just, I thought I made a note of it and I don't have it here, so.
And is the thought to go wireless next, is that what you were thinking though, Dave? Wasn't that, didn't we talk about that once, of the wireless communication?
Not this time.
It's cheaper to do a hard wa, hard line.
It's going to be, it'll be hard-wired.
Passes three to one, I vote no. Fifteen's a resolution amending number 2017-1093, a hearing on demolition of property at 722 Nebraska Street by authorizing a 90-day extension with bond, owner of Residential Equity Partners. I'll move it.
Darrell Bullock, code enforcement officer, second. Staff has received the bond and requirements for the, for the recension of the demolition order and stay of demolition, and would support that stay of demolition.
I think this is all good, I, I spoke with Mr. Bernard, and I'm not representing him, but I spoke to him about the, the action, and that, but I could understand what his concerns were, that right now of record, he was of record, the demolition notice and the placard notice, maybe even two notices, I'm not sure, three notices total, and we need to try to do what we can so the record is clear for his lender, short of.
I can't not do my job, and by removing a red tag would ask me to not do my job. My job is to make sure that we give warning and fair notice to the citizens of Sioux City, if there's an unsafe structure, it is an unsafe structure, it's not fit for occupancy, and to remove that tag simply for finance purposes, you're just asking me to abort him that, and that's what this stay of demolition will do.
Dan, and that? That can remove it?
That will, that will not remove the red tag, that will remove the demolition order, yes.
That removes the demolition order?
Yes.
Is that, is that going to be sufficient for your lender? Maybe, I'm not stating it as well as you'd like to have me state it, but.
Well, I think you captured it quite clearly, my name is Paul Bernard, I'm the principal for Residential Equity Partners, and.
Get your address, please.
Yes, sir, it's 1280 Monument Boulevard, Suite 200 in Concord, California.
Thank you.
My preference would be to remove the, all three items, the two placard items, and also the demolition item from the title to facilitate capitalization of the remodel.
Well, and I did what I said I would do for you.
Yes, sir.
And I talked to the city attorney, and, and she's advising us not to remove the placard notice, in fact, questions whether we legally can do that as a council, and that's, and then Darrell Bullock has, has chimed in and said he's not doing his job, but what I'm trying to do is how do you satisfy your lender so you can move forward on your project, because you've complied with everything else, correct? There's the bond.
Right. We have that.
Everything else you've complied with, so how would we make this work for you, or anyone else for that matter, that's saying, look, I've got my loan in place, I'm ready to go, and how do we accomplish that? But I wonder if it would make a difference to the lender that the demolition notice would be released of record, but not the placard notice.
Well, that is significant progress in the right direction, I can't comment on behalf of my lender, so I'll have to take that back to them and discuss that.
Okay, and I, and I will tell you that from my experience, for whatever that's worth, but I deal with local lenders here, so I'm not sure about your lender, but, but local lenders here will proceed with a placard notice, of record, we note that in our title work, but they know that the borrower, the project developer is actually moving forward with the project, and therefore they, they can live with that, once the project's done, then Darrell can come in and, and give a placard release.
If, if it's any help and support of the, of the project, I would certainly, you know, be willing to write a letter and say, you know, how this would proceed and how we would work with that 90-day stay, I mean, obviously this project would go beyond the 90 days, and how we would work forward with that through the permit process, and once we've eliminated and controlled safety concerns for the occupancy, we can move forward with permit process and not through the red tag process at that time. I'd be more than happy to, you know, provide that information to an investor, a letter of any kind.
I would think that would help, I would hope that would help.
Yes, sir, I think it would.
And I, and I know your time's limited, so if you, if you could be available early tomorrow morning.
Absolutely.
To try to put that together.
Yep.
That would be helpful. I'm sorry, we just can't do the release, but I understand the legalities of it as well, but I think this comes as close as we can get.
Yes, sir, it didn't, it didn't cost extra to ask.
Dan, just for clarification, there's only two reasons in which Darrell can remove a tag, one of which is demolition, the second of which is the defects are remedied, so there, there's only two opportunities.
You still have to have a temp, you have to be able to remove once the plans and specs are, the guy's got, there's a, there is a fine line here, once construction starts, they have to be able to get in the building and work, you can't keep a red tag on a building that they're working on.
Code allows workers to go into a red-tagged building.
That's what I'm saying, so my question is this, what is the deficiency now in that building?
Well, other than the airborne asbestos, which you walk into it because it was, it wasn't abated properly, you have open stairways, open elevator shafts.
Go slow now, go slow, because I'm really not very smart today.
Well, yeah.
Okay? What, have you done an air sampling test in there?
I will not go in there without the proper respirators, and I don't have, not certified to wear them.
Have we done that? That's my question.
I will check with the DNR, they haven't, I have not, the DNR did during their course of action against Mr. Wolf.
Okay, so that's your deficiency.
Well, that's one of the deficiencies.
Yeah, what's the others?
The others, you have open stairways, you have no plumbing, no electrical, no fall protection in any of the areas.
Lots of areas that have no plumbing and no electrical, that.
During the construction of the process, they do.
Doesn't necessarily mean they're, they're a red-taggable building, if I want to go in and gut a house, I can do that.
Under a permit process, yes, you can.
Exactly.
And there's no permit on this.
I understand, but that doesn't mean that that's a red-taggable item anymore either, just because there's no plumbing in there, doesn't mean it's inhabitable, but it doesn't mean you can red.
That's why I say I can work with it through the permit process and get that portion of it taken off, yes, I can.
Well, I hope we can work through this, because otherwise this gentleman can walk away, we got a $70,000 bond with a demolition that costs a lot more than that, so in case that we can't even do this for 10 days, then we're pretty inflexible in our code, I'll just say that, and leave it at that, and I know you're going to disagree, but there, you know, financing a red-tagged building is not the easiest thing to get done.
Next to impossible.
Thank you very much, so our code needs to somehow in the future address that, at least on a temporary basis, that we can lift it for 10 days or something and not give up our right to demolition, and I'm sure you're going to tell me state law doesn't allow that.
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't either, but I would like you to look into that, because this problem is one that I would like to not have again, personally, it's one we haven't had in 25 years, so it's pretty unique, but it's also the first large building that that's that way too, so.
If I can offer another comment, you, the agreement that I'm signing with the city says that I'm going to continue with the renovation, and in good faith, and if I don't, then the building becomes, again, subject to immediate demolition, so that's the understanding. What I need is to lift these sanctions, if you will, so I can start the demolition, of course, there are going to be permits, the very first thing we're going to do is make it safe to enter, there's other hazards that Mr. Bullock did not comment on, there's significant, significant fall hazards, there's also mold in the building, so there's a, a fairly significant effort we're going to make initially to make it safe for the workers to enter, and then proceed with the rest of the, of the cleanup on the property, so that's, that's the nature of the agreement that I signed, saying that I'm going to start there and then continue on an ongoing basis until it's done.
Well, why don't you guys try to get something in the morning with your lender to make sure that he's, that they're on board, and we'll work with you to try to get that done.
Yes, sir.
One, one, I don't know, I would be restless if I didn't say this, and maybe my memory is not as sharp as the mayor's is normally, maybe not today, I guess, but.
Not everybody has their A-game every day, always.
I hear you, I hear you. Is, you talked about operating and doing these things in good faith, or if the memory serves me correctly, we talked about securing that building before you left last time, and then I was told that that securing of the building never took place, and that was something that really bothered me, because I felt that we were trying to be very flexible in working with you, and working with those lenders, because obviously I want to see the project happen as well, but then when I hear that none of those efforts to secure the building happened, it, it's tough for me to look at you and hear you saying, we want to act in good faith this time around, does that make sense?
It absolutely does, and that's a very good point, there are multiple places where people were entering the building, including the second floor.
Yeah.
Coming in off of vehicles, they would park in the alleyway in the back, and creating new entry points, breaking windows that were previously apparently intact, so we have made efforts to secure the building, it is not completely secure now, as there's new entry points, so you have a good point there.
Which is frustrating on your end too, I mean, I understand it's, you're playing a shell game, and you, you're something, you know, you close one and another one opens or something, I just, that's one thing that, like I said, I hope the project happens, there will be a financing order, it just was frustrating to me to learn that we talked about making every effort we can to secure the building, and then I was informed that it was not, that's all I would want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution awarding a contract to HCI Construction for the Tyson Event Center wheelchair ramp replacement project. Oh, did we vote?
Yeah, I didn't think we did.
I don't think we voted.
No.
But it's not let up.
Did you put the vote up?
No, I didn't, there you go.
Okay.
So we're going to vote on what's been presented to us then, right, correct?
For a 90-day stay.
For the 90-day stay, and then Darrell's going to work with Mr. Bernard to, to get the letter, to try to satisfy the lender, okay.
With bond.
And we have received the signed agreement and the surety bond.
Okay.
From Mr. Bernard.
All right, thank you.
I would say this, for Mr. Bernard to secure that type of bond, I would say he probably has a little bit of a net worth, because those are very difficult to write.
Mayor, I think this is the first one we've ever seen.
Yes, sir, I went through a significant amount of scrutiny to get that bond.
I bet you did.
Thank you.
I bet you posted cash to do that, so. Passes four zero, now sixteen's a resolution awarding a contract to HCI Construction for the Tyson Event Center wheelchair ramp replacement project.
Dave Carney, Public Works Director, there's a lot of discussion, and you've received a memo on this, there was a lot of, and based on how we normally, or, we do unit price bids, so unit price, right on the bid sheet says the unit price governs, in this case it made someone's bid $6 million, which is obviously an error that was made, and so that's why that bid is the way it is, I guess I'm not sure if there's questions or how you'd like to answer, but I know, I think Nicole provided you guys some information today regarding what Master Builders of Iowa and Their Guide to Public Bidding says, and I think it's, it backs the fact that we should not go back and adjust the unit price on that contract, or on that bid, excuse me, and then we would still leave HCI as our low bid.
I believe both bidders are here today, so.
Go ahead. I'm Steve Nelson with Nelson Construction.
You can state your address.
2805 West Fourth, Sioux City. I am the person who made the error on the unit pricing, and obviously it's, it was an error, it's not a $6 million bid, it's 300 and some odd, $316,000 total bid. I know you guys in, in legal shows that we can, they can waive that error and award at the best interest of the city, which, you know, in this case, it's $16,000 is the difference. My bigger problem with the, maybe even the process, and I understand the unit prices prevail, is at the bid letting, the bid opening, the total prices are read with the bids are, ours is 316, I believe HCI's was 320, 332, and Clangers was 300 and some odd dollar, it doesn't matter, so if, if that, if those numbers only are read out loud, the unit prices aren't read out loud, so we don't know what the unit prices are, and I don't think it's fair that they should award the bid based off unit prices when they're not disclosed. Otherwise, you could just, we just turn our bids in, and there's no bid opening, and they are what they are, and they're not disclosed, so I don't think that, I don't think there's any dishonesty here by them or anybody else changing the numbers, so I guess my point is if, if we're the low bid total, and we're saving the taxpayers money, I think that error could be waived, as legal said it could be a city. So I guess my point is, if we're the low bid total, and we're saving the taxpayers money, I think that error could be waived, as legal said it could be a city, and award us the job.
I guess I'm a little confused still from the note that I received from you earlier in the day, the information you provided us. Since you indicated that generally anything affecting bid price is not a minor irregularity that can be waived. So I'm confused exactly what that means. Can we waive the, yeah, the error, or do we have to start all over again?
What I will tell you is that generally items that affect overall bid pricing are considered significant and material. And the general rule, while not in the state code, the interpretation, for example, in the Public Owner's Guide to Legal Bidding, that's the portions that I gave you today, the excerpts of that, they caution very strongly in allowing any significant material changes to be waived if there's an error in the bid phase. Now, while I can tell you that's not set in stone either way, that's the recommended advice that most municipalities are following within the state, is that if it affects pricing, it could potentially give a material advantage to the bidder that has the discrepancy if they're allowed to calculate that out.
There's also a thing called an unbalanced bid, so if your, if your engineer's estimate is $25,000 for mobilization, and the bidder, the two other bidders bid this at 6 and 3,410 and 6,000, that means they're gambling that they're going to have more unit costs. So they load their unit cost up because they know what the fixed mobilization is. Mr. Dake, and I know that you never have unbalanced bids at the state level, but, and I think, I don't have a dog in this fight, but I think you should throw all the bids out because they look unbalanced to me. I don't know how you can argue 3,410 mobilization when your engineer puts 25, but yet then their unit costs are allowed to be higher, meaning that if the scope of this job increases, you're going to pay dramatically more for it. I don't know how you cannot say that's not an unbalanced bid, 6,000 for Klinger, 3,410, I think Mr. Nelson unbalanced it the other way. But that's, there's something not right when you have a $25,000 estimate and bidders are bidding 6 and 10, because what they're doing is loading up those unit costs that they know at the end of the day may go higher. Am I wrong? You're the engineers.
Yeah, I mean, unbalancing a bid, or.
That is, then define unbalancing a bid to me, because I've asked you guys this, and you never have an answer. Why do we call, why do we call for unbalanced bids at lettings, at state lettings? Why do we call, why do we review those?
I mean, I, I think it'd be very difficult on some of these to determine what would be unbalanced to an extent that, I mean, everybody's bid prices change a little bit going across, to say, say one person's is unbalanced versus someone else, because you're right, I mean, if they think it's an item that's going to go over, of course, they're going to try to put a little bit more of their money in that because if that item goes up, they're going to get paid more, but. I mean, you have such a variance in some of these, like you said, mobilization, you have one guy who's only got $3,400 on mobilization, and another guy's got $58,000 on mobilization. I mean, it's, it's.
But yet his unit prices for, for some of those items is much higher. Right? It would have to be, how else would you get there?
Yeah, mobilization is your upfront cost, bonding, moving equipment there.
Your equipment there.
Yeah, things you've got to pay upfront. Yeah, I mean, the bids are.
Look at your foam, $13, the engineer's estimate's 5, and 1375 and 1435. I don't know, they're betting there's more foam on the job.
I'm sure they are.
Well, then you're, are you going to have a lower price?
Oh, what, you mean with Mr. Nelson's bid?
Well, you can make an argument that anybody could be low depending on how the quantities go here.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, that's why you go by based on what their estimated quantities are.
But you're not supposed to gamble that the units are going to increase. You're not supposed to do that with your bid by doing your mobilization cheap. You're not supposed to do that.
I agree with you.
Whatever.
But I also agree that, Bob, at the, at the end of the, we all put a lump sum bid in this project, all three of us together.
No, it was a unit price bid. It's not a lump sum bid. That's the difference.
That's true.
It's a unit price bid.
Then why weren't the unit prices read out loud if that's the base, hold on, if that's the basis of award, why aren't those prices read out loud? Because if that's the case, not that it happened, I can submit our form on the total price like we did, and those can be changed without anybody knowing what they are. By a single stroke of a pen to add a, you know, I'm not saying it happens, it's just the appearance, I guess is a better word to use.
Because I mean, this is, this is a different contract where we only have 20 items, but we have contracts where we have 3, 400 items. And I mean, but that's how, that's how they're bid across the state. I've never been to a letting where they read each individual item for each individual contractor, so I can't say to them.
That's why you review them afterwards and add them up and all that.
And that's, you know, and that's where we come in with, when there's arithmetic mistakes, we go back to the unit price and use the unit price as governance, and, and I mean, Steve, I understand that there was a mistake here, but in reading, in reading the Master Builders Guide, to me, the only response to a clerical error is to allow the contractor to withdraw his bid. There isn't a, to me, in reading their guidelines, there isn't a remedy to go back and change the unit price because of the error, the only correction is, is, and typically, that's an error where somebody makes an error in the opposite direction, after you looked at your numbers, you were so low that you realized, wait a minute, I made a mistake, and then, oh, here's my obvious error, and then we let the person withdraw it without taking a hit on their bid bond.
Right. I also want to clarify, there's a unit price there, and there's an extended price, in this case where the error came in. The extended price was $7,800, and the mistake that was made, I put the $7,800 also in the unit pricing.
Oh, we're not doubting that, it's very clear what the error was.
I understand, exactly. I just don't want to think there was $7,800 in the unit price, and then I had a lump sum total for the whole project. That price was extended in that category to the $7,800, so.
No, I mean, it was very clear what the error, what the error was, and it was clerical, but I, I think in order to keep our, because I could see, and not saying that we would have someone do this, I could see someone intentionally put a math error in their bid so they could get a, well, I'll take this price if I'm low, I'll take that price if I'm not low, that now makes me low. Offering a second look is what they call it in Master Builders, and I, and I just don't think we can open that door, or I would rather we didn't open that door.
What's the, what's the downside to rejecting all the bids and re-bidding?
Other than the, the bidders don't typically like that because now their prices are exposed.
And they know what they want, yeah, or where the other companies are. Has this ever, the thing I struggle with is I'm not an expert in this field, so I.
The only thing I can say that it was close, the only thing I had close is I remember a situation when I was here the first time that, and this was back when, before we allowed people to do spreadsheets and attach them as the bid, that somebody did a spreadsheet, and they just wrote down the extended price, didn't fill out any of the unit prices, and we rejected it. Because it was non-responsive, because they didn't have the unit prices filled out, and we couldn't go by the extension.
Did we in our invitation to bids, did we put that statement in about owner reserves the right to waive any and all bid irregularities?
That's in our, that's in our bid documents.
We always include a statement.
But I think in this case, we, the irregularity we'd be, waving would be changing a unit price, which I think.
Well, it also says in your, what you've given us, that material deviation occurs when one bidder gains a substantial competitive advantage as a result of the bidder's deviation from the requirements of the bid invitation. He didn't do that.
No, I, no, but I, but I.
But that, that's not, he didn't gain a competitive advantage, it's obviously what he, he knew, you know what he did, but.
And it becomes a question of interpretation too for the council because we know what the situation is here. We have errors, usually it's a multiplication error that we see, but we can see other errors, and we'll have contractors ask us to waive those too, and have the council have consideration for that. So what we're saying is, please take a close look at it, realize that this could be precedent setting, and you may have additional requests.
Well, I don't think it's precedent, I think you've done this before in the past, I can tell you.
For mathematical errors.
Yeah, I've never seen where we've gone back and changed the bid price, it's usually, you know, I've only seen it where we've used the bid price to correct the extension price out, that we haven't gone back the other way, and I, I think that's the box I'm afraid of opening, that you give the people the option, I want to take that price or this price depending on what makes me low. I mean, an example, and it's, you could have, let's say, an item that's got 200 units on it, and a bidder puts in $50 in his unit price and writes 1,000 in the extension. That's a, so it's a $49,000 swing in what the price could be.
Says here, the second type of problem is where a mistake is obvious, the material makes the bid facially non-responsive, but it cannot be resolved without referenced outside documents, in this situation, the bid is non-responsive and must be rejected. So you should have rejected his bid, you should not have done the extension, you should have just rejected his bid once you knew that.
Well, we wouldn't know that till we did the bid tab.
Well, but you, you extended it when you brought it to the council, you should have rejected it before you brought it to the council. If that, if you're going to read the Master Builders word for word here.
Yeah, we should have. And when I talked to Master Builders, that's what he said, he would have rejected the bid as non-responsive.
Oh, had to be adjusted as well, not just mine.
Yeah, one, yeah, one was a dollar and one was 10 cents.
Well, just help me out here, what was your, so what did you intend to write on the unit, unit price?
I think it factors into 9.75 per pound, $9.75 per pound. Yeah, the extended price is $7,800 based on 800 pounds of foam filler, so it should have been 9.75.
Is there something in the bid documents that would, would tell us that?
Yeah, on the bid sheet itself.
No, there's nothing that would have told you what his intent was.
Besides the bid.
Obviously, yeah.
Yeah, and it was 9.75 anywhere else, because, you know, I look at it.
The other bids, that's, that's how you tell if there's a mistake, you look at the other.
Well, what D.A.'s saying is, can you reference the actual price?
I have the actual bid, his bid tab here, if you would like to see it.
You can't, you just have to, well, you have to look at the other bids and say, that's unreasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I go from a $316,000 bid to 6.4 million or 6.2 million dollar bid.
I mean, it can happen either way, that's, that's where I'm looking at, I mean, others can be where you are today, and, you know, what do you do, and how do you handle it, and what's the right way to handle it? It's, it's difficult, because you don't, you didn't intend that.
No, I didn't, but my total price is, was lower, and I, you know, the extended numbers are all correct, those do all add up correctly. I mean, it's happened the other way, sorry, Tom.
Hey, I'm Tom Coob, representing HCI Construction, and.
Give your address too, please.
Pardon me?
Address too, please.
1505 Stable Drive, South Sioux State, Nebraska. I do understand Mr. Nelson's, what he's talking about here, but, but just as everyone else has said, a unit price is a unit price. I've been in this business for over 35 years now, and I've not one time seen them read unit prices. They, they just don't have the time of day for it. It's just like the engineer stated, you get into a 3, 400 dollar line item, or a 3 or 400 line item bid, there's just no time in the world for this, and so that's why they go with the unit prices, number one. And, and if there's a change, you know, in the scope of the work, then you've got that unit price. So, I mean, I lost a dollar on my bid, so I'm willing to accept that.
Tom, I want to make sure I'm following you on this. You said, though, that unit price is, is good to have in this situation, but if you have four, three or 400 items, you don't.
They do not, they do not read.
But they don't read them out loud, he's saying.
No.
Yeah, oh, to read them, but you still have to put the unit price.
Right, right, and this is a unit base, base bid.
But there is such a thing as an unbalanced bid, would you agree with that?
I agree with that, but you still go back to the next bidder on the unit prices. It's all unit prices.
If all the bidders have an unbalanced bid.
I disagree with that part.
Well, I don't disagree with that, is, what is an unbalanced, you know, I've asked you guys to define it, you can never give me a definition, then why is there such a thing as an unbalanced bid? Why do they reject them at the state level because they're unbalanced?
I would have to ask them what they, what they use as a determining factor to say it's unbalanced. I don't know.
Well, I know how I would unbalance it, low mobilization and high on, if you think there's going to be more concrete. You can, you can win or lose on that deal, but that, obviously. So, but I don't care. Again, I don't have a dog in this fight.
So you would say reject them all there then, or what?
No, I don't care what you do, I'm just, I would like this engineering department one time to tell me what an unbalanced bid is, because how can you have no mobilization on two bids and, and the engineer's estimate's even 25, that's all I'm asking. It doesn't matter what the book says if we don't ever look at our bids and try to determine if they're unbalanced, that's been my point around here for the last six years, right? We never look at a bid and say, is this unbalanced? So, but.
So then you would reject them, I'm just trying to follow and trying to.
No, I, I don't care, again, I'm only asking the question for my own satisfaction, it has nothing, okay? I'm not, I'm just asking for my own.
That's fine, I'm trying to wrap my mind around what I would say.
As, as.
I know, and I'm saying, from my understanding, for future time I'm serving here, is trying to understand when I'm looking at them, does that make sense? Because why do we estimate so high and then they bid so low? Is that what he's saying is why it would be unbalanced? And then we reject all of them and say, no, it has to be more in line with what it's actually going to be? Is that the argument?
Well, yeah, gamble thinking there's items out there that are going to run over, and they're going to put more money on that and take it out of their, their moab so their balance, so their bid still comes in low, but that they have a chance of getting more money, but, I mean, I don't know what the criteria that the state uses to sit there and say whether it's an unbalanced bid or not. The only one I've ever seen where we questioned about balance was that someone put a huge number on mobilization because they wanted to get money upfront, or they front-loaded an item that's early in the construction, but, and, and we, we, I didn't reject the bid, but we talked about mobilization, about not paying them all upfront because we were afraid that they.
Why would you do that? Why, that's as, that's as big a error as what Mr. Nelson has made. Why would you have not rejected that and said, you know why you didn't? Because they were low.
I'm just saying that's what we were, that's what we did.
Well, I mean, you can't say, you can't accept a guy's bid.
But unbalanced bid is.
Wait, wait, let me finish, you're not going to get payment his mobilization because you've accepted his bid, these guys wouldn't stand for that and they shouldn't. You put a bid out there, said, this is my mobilization, pay me when I hit the job, that's the way it works. You can't afterwards, that's changing a contract after you award a contract, it's not allowed, without a change order.
Okay, well.
Well, you can't do that, so don't tell me that you did that because you shouldn't have.
Well, we shouldn't have, but I guess, you know, that's the only, you asked an example, that was the only example I have. I mean, I'm sorry, but.
But you awarded it, and then you.
But that's not this case, I mean, this case is, the fact is, is that the, I don't think we can go back and change the unit price. That's, and that's what we're asking you, you guys have the right, if you might want to go back and change the unit price, that's.
Well, we've used all three contractors, correct?
Yep.
And thank goodness, what you do bid is usually accurate, and it's fair and reasonable, and, and this is really unfortunate, I, I, no offense to you, because you did what was right, but I've been, I kind of feel your pain on this as far as what was done. But it puts us in a real bad situation because if we do want to reject the bids, I wouldn't like that either, either side, I wouldn't want that to happen. So I guess we've been fortunate enough that what you have submitted in the past has been, has been good and has been excellent, now we have one here, and what do we do with it, so.
Appreciate that.
That's the dilemma, well, I appreciate what you've done, I appreciate what your company has done too, I mean, when you have good companies doing quality work in the community, you just hate to even see this situation, but we have it, and, you know, I, I think. You know, when I used to be before council, I always wondered, how's everybody going to vote, you know, where am I going with this, so I'm just going to, I'm just going to say, you know, so that's why I'm inclined to probably keep it the way it is. And I know you won't be happy about that, but I just want to be upfront with you, I wish I could find a fix for this, is what I wish, but I can't think of one. But I don't want you to not stop doing business with the city, and I don't think you. don't want you to not stop doing business with the city. And, and I don't think you will, but it's just, I, I'm just telling you, it's, it's very difficult for those reasons. And again, no reflection on your company. I think you've done a good job too. And you'd say, well, then Dan, just vote, just vote for it and let's move on. But, you know, you want to kind of air the differences and talk about it because it's, it could happen to you, it could happen to any of us.
I agree.
And mistakes are made, and, and it's how do we deal with those mistakes that were made? City attorney's telling us it's material enough that we, we can't ignore or shouldn't ignore it. I guess we need to follow legal advice. But I, I just want to be upfront with you and, and in some respects, I wish this hadn't happened, but it has. So what do we do with it as a council?
Right. I would just echo those points. I mean, that's kind of where I'm at. I wish it didn't happen, but I understand, and I appreciate the work that both of you have done as well. I really do. And so that's where I'm struggling with this. I'm trying to get up to speed and make sure that I make the best decision and not set a precedent going the other way.
Need a motion. That project, yeah, it's near and dear.
Huh? Yeah, exactly. This project obviously means a lot to me, so.
The last thing I'll say real quick is I, the little frustrating part to me was the email from the engineering department that they were gonna waive this error and award it to me. And then, as long as I signed off the document, and then five hours later, I got another email back that said, after further discussion internally, we're not going to award it to you. So I don't know what happened in those five hours or.
Well, our recommendation.
People waived it off or said that they would waive that, the error.
And that, that email asking what his unit price would be and would he be okay with that? If, and it would have to get accepted by council, but then, then they'd let him know that we were not gonna recommend that. So that was our error.
Yeah, that's, that's really unfortunate that happened. And, but I'm guessing.
This was over, but this also over a period of eight days. So it wasn't like it was decided that morning, this whole process from the day of bid to that point in time. So, you know, and I feel I was low bid on the job. That was the low number. And now to backtrack like this, it's, it's, yeah, it's disappointing.
Yeah.
Don't think it's right, cause I think you guys can waive this and move it forward and, or save money. But I understand going forward where it could be an issue.
Yeah, everyone deserves to be treated right. We truly do. Whether it's staff or council or mayor, I mean, everybody deserves to be treated fairly and, and right. I think that's what we're trying to do here. So, but I'm glad you voiced those concerns because we need to know about that as a council. And, and staff admitted, you know, it was a mistake they made. And, and you just try to move on, I guess, as best we can. But I, I'm sorry that's happened, that happened, that you got that word and then five hours later, it was reversed.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Do you still need a motion?
Yep.
Does the city legal have a recommendation?
We would go with engineers' recommendation to warrant HCI.
To warrant HCI?
Yes, based on the fact that it could be considered substantial and material.
I would move to award HCI as written, RCI.
I'll second it.
Pass the three to one, I vote no. And I'll tell you why I vote no. Number one, I've asked for six years what an unbalanced bid is. For six years, I've never gotten an answer. And, and you can look at this mobilization on this bid and question whether this is or not. You can also look at the bid and know that that mistake was obvious. And I'm not opposed to HCI one bit. But HCI would be here arguing as they should if they'd made that same mistake, because it is so obvious what happened, that any reasonable person would look at that bid and say, this is the way it should be. And I know the HCI wouldn't say that today, but if, if, if the roles were reversed, they would be here arguing. And they should be, because they would know that they'd made that same mistake. So I, I think in fairness, that, you know, that, that's not a fair way to do it. I looked at those bids, it is so obvious what happened, that any reasonable person would have, would have made a different decision. And, and I think you can do all the master builder stuff you want to. It says in there unless he tried to gain a competitive advantage, which he did not do with that bid, so.
But Mayor, Mayor, I think though, too, though, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. In fact, I was gonna ask you on these unbalanced bids, when you, you know they're unbalanced when you open them and you've disclosed what they.
Doesn't matter. An unbalanced bid means that that is trying to gain a competitive advantage. And so you make the determination on an unbalanced bid after a thorough review of the bids, is what it says, to determine that it's not unbalanced.
If it is unbalanced, then you reject.
You have a right to reject that bid.
You reject all of them?
No, you reject the one that's unbalanced. So. Seventeen's a presentation of the Chris Larson Park Riverfront Development Project.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Cindy Brewer and I live at forty-seven twenty-three Cambridge Court. I am the president of the Park and Rec Advisory Board and also on the Riverfront Steering Committee. Today, I am very excited to our first meeting on March eighth, two thousand sixteen. We've had five public meetings that have happened on March eighth, two thousand sixteen, April nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, June sixth, two thousand sixteen, November thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, and today, March twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. The Riverfront Steering Committee met with Smith Group JJR via phone conferencing, meetings, and then our committee continued to meet through this past two years. Smith Group JJR has done a wonderful job with the survey, schematic design, meetings, public perception, budget numbers, and getting us here today, two years later. Earlier today, the Park and Recreation Advisory Board unanimously approved the schematic, and we are excited to bring it to you today. So with that, Tom, go ahead.
Thank you, Cindy, and thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you also to the Steering Committee, who we've been working with for two years now. It's really been a great process. In a, in a labor-intensive process, we've had many conversations about what this, what this park should be and what it can be, and how it can be a transformational moment for the city. So I'm very excited to walk you through where we're at with the whole thing. So I, my name is Tom Rogers. I'm a landscape architect with Smith Group JJR. We're also working with V and K. Greg Rose from, Vintor and Kim is here. As I mentioned, we worked with the, both the Sioux City staff and the Steering Committee over the past two years. And this is our second step in the process. We started in two thousand sixteen with a master planning process. This is the schematic design of the process, so building upon the master plan, validating what we did in the master plan and taking it through the next step, and preparing it to really design something for construction. So this is the culmination of the schematic design. I'm going to walk through where we're at with the project right now. Some of you are familiar with these, but for other folks that, that aren't, I will, I will try to quickly and briefly go through the whole project. You can see the site highlighted in orange here that runs from the Floyd River to the playground and event space by the Anderson Dance Pavilion. And it takes up the place of the former Argosy Casino Boat. And it's really about transforming what was a five hundred car parking lot into a civic destination in the community. As Cindy mentioned, we've had quite an extensive public process. When we first came, we had a three-day charrette. And the first thing we asked was, what do we want our riverfront to be? What is the best thing that we can do here? We used the information we gathered in the beginning to build the basis of the program that we created. And that program involved a concept that we still have today. Three really big ideas that make a great riverfront. First, community spaces, creating a destination along the riverfront for the community to gather, to create a civic space. Second, everyday places, filling that, the remainder of that space with everyday year-round activity that families could use, that someone in the downtown could use, that a visitor could use in a small group. And third, to embrace the river, to take care of the resource that we have, to create opportunities to interact with it and to enjoy it. This is the master plan that we had at the culmination of our, our first step, our master planning step. And really what that was, was a programming step, to understand what the community wanted. We took this information and we dug a little bit deeper with the Steering Committee. Over the past year, we've surveyed the site. We've validated the program that we started with. We've refined that program, and we've really refined how all of these elements fit together. So you can see a list of some of the updates of the overall schematic design that we have, from working with the DOT on where, to moving a few things around, to adjusting the program a little bit, to really right sizing some of our shelters and some of our, our activity zones. So I'll walk through each of these from west to east for you. Our overall program is about, first about parking. We have about, say, about whether or not this needed to be sized for large events, or whether it needed to be sized for everyday. And we, and we said for, we have a five hundred car parking lot right now. What we really wanted was parking for everyday. In large events, we would shuttle or bus people to the space. We have a series of different events here from, I'll just, I'll just walk through from west to east. Parking and drop-offs on the west, the Stockyard Garden, a series of lawns, a large civic green in the central, in the central core area that's between Virginia and Floyd. That core green is flanked by two, two pavilions that I'll go through in a moment. The pavilion at Floyd is really the heart of the park. It's the central destination. It's the easiest to get to in a car, and we felt that that was the anchor of the space. As we move farther to the east and we move down river, the site becomes a little bit more passive. We have a couple rec areas, basketball courts, the potential for a Ferris wheel, which I will get into in a moment, and then some just passive recreation, picnicking spaces.
Tom, you may have already stated this, I might have missed it, but could, could you tell the council and mayor what the, the length of this, the area that we're talking about, the park?
Yes, the overall area is roughly twelve acres. Floyd and Virginia are about seven hundred feet apart, so the overall is around twenty-four hundred feet or so, really about a quarter of a mile. So what I'm going to do is, oh, the other thing we did is there's an, the existing trail that we have, you're, you have under construction right now, a trail extension to bring the trail across the Floyd. So we looked first at making sure that that regional trail fit through the site, that it was easy to navigate, that it didn't, it wasn't a conflict with any of the activities that we had. So that was one of our, our main drivers in the beginning of refining that. So what I'll do now is that shows the whole park. I'll go from west to east. We'll divide this into three zones, and I'll walk through each one of them briefly. So starting at the far west end of the site, this is Chris Larson Park Road. This is at about Virginia. And so what we are showing here is the existing Chris Larson Park Road, and that drive stopping at Virginia. And there, there would be a turnaround here in a parking lot for about twenty cars. Farther to the west, there's a smaller parking lot, and there's also a turnaround there. The reasoning for this is to, one, distribute a little bit of parking. But two, when we have a large event, we can shut down that road all the way at the west end of the park, and we have a turnaround space. Then we have staging space for, whether it's for trailers or for events, for facilitating whatever events are there. What you'll find is different is we have a, a few small green spaces here, and then we've moved our Stockyard Garden. And our master plan, the Stockyard Garden was at Floyd, we've moved it to the west side of the site. After meeting with the Steering Committee and, and having quite lengthy conversations about it, we felt that the goal of the Stockyard Garden was to create a unique destination that was really more of a passive space. We wanted it to be in a prominent location, yet off to the side, where it wasn't in the middle of all the bustle of activity in a big event. And we found that this was the best space that we could do that. So this kind of anchors that, that western edge of the park. We have a, an overlook.
One second. What is the Stockyard Garden?
The Stockyard Garden, I'll show you a picture of it in a moment, if you could bear with me to walk through the rest of this.
I suppose.
The Virginia overlook and shelter is at the terminus of Virginia. So as you drive into the park, or as you, as you view coming through that overpass, underpass into the park, there's a shelter there that deflects your view to either side. You have a, something that you see, a focal point. And that is located right where the entrance to the farmer, former Argosy Casino Boat was. So we're reusing some of the infrastructure that was there, the stairs, the accessible ramp, to create a destination that's down on the waterfront, using what you already have. That shelter would be built above it. That creates a picnicking area. It has restrooms, and it creates a rentable destination and shelter in the area. And it really kind of anchors that corner. The Stockyard Garden is a little bit farther to the west, and you can see that here. The basis for the Stockyard Garden was to take some inspiration of the history of the city and what was here before, and look at it in a new way and, and create an artistic expression of what that could be. So what we did is we took the patterning from the stockyards, the, the gridded-out pattern. And we took that idea and we said, what if it, what if it becomes a garden instead? You know, cause creating a stockyard was not the greatest destination by itself, recreating that, but referencing it, telling a story of drew what you have today. So this creates a contemplative space, a destination to stop, and, and a place to, to spend time on the river.
And for those of us who are completely inartistic, how does that reference the stockyards? Tell me, please, cause I'm.
I'm sorry.
That question will be asked by more than just me.
Ask that one more time, I'm sorry.
How does that garden?
Reflect.
Reflects the stockyards, because.
Oh, sure.
Those of us that have very little imagination, you've lost me.
I understand. So as I was saying, what we started with was the patterning of the stockyards. So if you look at historic aerial photos of the stockyards, everything is gridded off in very similar-sized pens.
Yeah.
So we started with the geometry that was based on that. But we wanted to create an interesting space to be in. And in a little bit of an ironic twist, we made it a garden based on the cows that were there. Second, though, in addition to that, there's a space there that you could have exhibits. You could tell the history of what happened in the stockyard. And so what we're really referencing is some of the patterning that was there, some of the connection that went from Sioux City out into the rest of the world. You know, we're, we're moving, we're moving everything out and connecting to the rest of the world. So there's a pattern that's going through there of, we started with the rail yard, the curving patterns that are sweeping through. And then we added this layer of the grid. And then we added another layer of the lights, and the lights represent everything that was built up above. So pulling some of those things together and then plus, plus signage, plus exhibits, give you some opportunity to tell that story.
Captures all of that, Mayor. It's a beautiful thing. Moving ahead now.
And are those poles gonna be lights? Is that what that is?
Yes, the poles would be lights.
And then where we probably won't be plowing these inroads or sidewalks?
You may not plow the interior walks in the winter. You may, you may leave those unplowed. There, the planting that you will see will depend on what the final mix is of shrubs versus perennials. For instance, if they were all perennials, they would have dieback and you would have, you would have less that was there. If you had shrubs, there'd be some structure that was there. You would see the lights all year, and what we found is oftentimes, places like this make really nice exhibits in the winter, especially if, if they can be lit and take advantage of the lighting that we have. So they can be, they can be unique and different destination in the winter. Any other questions on that?
No, keep going, please.
You didn't like that one?
No.
Okay.
So center, so those are, so that first part, these are all smaller spaces. These are places that you would come down, and you might spend a couple hours in. You might sit in the garden. You might sit in the lawn. We have a yoga lawn. You might do yoga on Saturday morning.
That's the mayor's favorite.
That's, the, the mayor is gonna do yoga on Saturday mornings. But we also wanted to create a civic destination, and that's really what this core area of the park is. So the space between Virginia and Floyd is based on the idea of having a great lawn. It's flanked by a pavilion building at either end. The larger of those is at Floyd, the smaller is at Virginia. In between there, there's several things that are going on. You see, the great lawn is really. You see, the great lawn is really broken up into two spaces. This could hold one large event or two smaller ones, or it could be separated into lots of different things going on on a regular day. We created a promenade along the river, and we created overlooks at those points, at that area, and several places that you could stop and sit and enjoy the river.
So are you going to change the elevation dramatically here?
We are not going to change the elevation. The elevation would stay where it is. We had quite lengthy conversations about getting down to the water. And one of the things we talked about in the beginning was touching the water. And we decided that that was not a good idea.
Yeah.
And for very good reason. The water is very fast-moving. So what this became was, how do we get a perch? How do we get a vantage point that's on the edge? So to create some unique opportunities to gather, and to create, you know, everyone knows the river is there. There's no avoiding the river. But at the same time, the view that you have across the river is not the best view that you could ever have on the river. You have great views up and down the river. The view straight across is, you can see the whole- Let's create an area where we have some trees and we're buffering that a little bit, and then we create some experiences along the water's edge.
But I'm assuming the water on the, is off to the left.
The water is, where did my, the water is here.
No, go to the other picture.
Oh, this one. Yes, the water is here. No, no, no.
That's the highway.
That's the highway. The water is over here. I'll go through that momentarily.
Okay, so then isn't that an elevation change?
So the next thing we did, which I didn't get to yet, is we started talking about this idea of the icon. And when we finished the master plan, we said, one of our goals was to create an icon. That icon at the time was a Ferris wheel. And so as our first step to our schematic design, we were asked to explore some alternatives to the icon. So one of the alternatives that we explored was to not build an icon, but to build an experience that was along the edge. And the experience that we designed, we called Exploration Ridge. The idea behind this ridge is that we would berm up an area along the highway. We would have a walk that rose up, and we would create an edge, one that was planted on the outside, or on the north, that created a nice buffer to the highway, created something nice to look at while you drove by, and buffered sound and the experience from the highway a little bit. On the south side of that, we created a unique play experience. You see some terrace seating. You see a slide with, that the purple area is playground surfacing. So kids could run up the hill, and they could have a slide that was built into the hill. And then there's some other interactive exercise and play notes there as well. That doubles as a place to hang out and watch what's going on in the green. Whether there's a flag football game there, or whether there's a concert there, it's an interesting perch that you would have. And you can see this view, the water is to your right in the view, and I'll make this a little bit larger here. And this ridge is to your left. So this ridge goes up about 10 feet above the existing grade of the park right now, and then it ramps back down. So it creates a buffer that, it obscures a little bit of the park, but you can see in on either end. We wanted to make sure, that was one thing that came up, that we wanted to make sure we had good views into the park, from a safety standpoint especially. So this creates a nice edge, it creates a buffer for you. It creates a unique play experience that complements what you already have on the river. You have a traditional playground on the river. So this is a different play experience without building another play structure. And then you can see the Floyd Plaza in the background. Along the river, so now you can see that Exploration Ridge in the background. Along the river are some of the seating nodes that we created. Here, just a terrace of maybe two seats. That's up this high, that gives you a little bit of a buffer, or some prospect refuge from what's behind you. A little bit farther down, we pushed out from the trail, and there's more of an overlook at that space.
I appreciate that you included Councilman Moore on his Lime bike there.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Waters. Yep, that's me.
The other thing that, thank you. The other thing that we wanted to do, recognizing that it does take time, is to plant trees along the edge, to create a grove that you could go under, to create a promenade that eventually, and we realized this doesn't happen in two years or in five years, that trees grow slowly on the riverfront. But over time, that you would create this really beautiful promenade that you could go along. As you pull up to Floyd, we looked at the entry. One of the things we were asked was to create space for food trucks, to create a dynamic entry, and really the anchor point of this destination. So this is the shelter. As you just drove under the highway, and you're entering the park, and you see the Floyd Shelter. The Floyd Shelter has, is about 2,000 square feet of roof space. There's men's and women's restrooms, and there's a small amount of storage, but it's mostly an open-air pavilion. That really deflects your view, so it's the focal point of your view when you drive up. You look to the right, and you see the bridge up the river. You look to the left, and you see down the river. But your view as you come in is the shelter itself. It opens up to the green, and it frames a smaller area behind it, where we have a small fountain that's at grade, where kids could play and be near their parents. So there could be an event here. Kids could be playing at the fountain, or off in the green, and the parents could be under the shelter. We envisioned it as a really nice way to mix different uses and to make it family-friendly. You can also see Exploration Ridge in the background. You can see the size of the green, and you can see the walk ramping up. As we move farther to the east, from Floyd, Floyd to Floyd, to the river, as I said, we get a little bit more passive in our approach. We have the parking that's there, we have the drop-off. We have the South Bottoms Memorial that's right here. We've included an area right here for the Ferris wheel. Now, what's great about where we're at with the design right now, and where we felt really strongly about, was that we've created one pocket for the Ferris wheel. The design of the park does not succeed or fail based on the inclusion of the Ferris wheel. We understand that all of the construction of this is going to be somewhat contingent upon grant funding and fundraising. This allows us to create a base plan that functions all by itself, and if the Ferris wheel is something that moves forward, it can fit in this location. Next to that, you see an area with basketball courts and lawn games. There's a restroom structure in here, and a small half-to-three-quarter acre dog park. Farther to the east, two areas that are described as passive lawns. So these are smaller lawn areas, again, very similar to what was on the western edge, with some picnic shelters that would be designed for day use, to go out and maybe have a barbecue, hang out for a few hours with your family. And then looking at using the old wharf that's there as an overlook. In the master plan, we identified the desire to have a fishing pier in this location. We met with the DNR, we met with the steering committee several times, and talked about that as an idea, and there were a couple of things that came out of it. One, we got feedback from some of the fishermen in the community that the fishing that was there was really along the bank, that having a pier at that location was not that advantageous. Second, we talked to the Corps about the permitting process, and what we found out, at least from our preliminary exploration, was that we would have to push that pier up pretty high. We dropped down 20 feet or so from this upper area at the passive lawn to the water's edge. And that pier would have to sit high, at the elevation of what's there today. So we were very high above the water.
And wasn't it about 35 feet?
Yeah, I think it's about 35 feet altogether. So after talking about this, what we were finding was we were building a pretty long pier that was over land for a very short section that was over water. And we talked about the merits of this as a space, as a destination, as a use, and we said, you know, we have a really interesting old structure that's there. Can we repurpose that structure as an overlook? It's something that we could make very visible. I believe you can see it from the highway as you drive by. We can create a unique vantage point that's there. From a proximity from land to water, it's no different from the fishing pier, but you're building off of what's there. So as the schematic design sits today, we have taken the fishing pier out. Now, we've been asked to look a little bit further into, if we did want to include something like this, what, you know, what would be the next step? Is it feasible or not? And so we've said, our schematic plan does not have a fishing pier in it. We have some correspondence with the DNR to determine if that's even something that we would want to have happen. But right now, the schematic plan does not include the fishing. Any other questions about this?
Yeah, I think that's a, to not have some fishing element in this plan, you guys have missed the point. I'm sorry, somewhere that you have to have. People are going to fish here anyway, so find a place for them to fish. If it's up by the Perry Creek opening, where it's more flat and easier to access with some sort of sidewalk down, and builds up some concrete where you can put lawn chairs and park in that parking lot. But you're asking citizens to spend a lot of money here, and you're trying to chase them out of where they fish.
So what we did talk about doing was creating easier access, a more comfortable access to that area.
But where's it at on your plan, then?
So this is the existing, or the existing, the proposed path. Here's the, here is the bike trail.
Yeah.
And then here is this path. We had stopped at this point with manicured improvements, parking.
So you're asking, that's my point, guys. You're asking somebody to walk, you know, how many feet with?
It's about 600.
600 feet with tackle boxes, lawn chairs, and all this other stuff. I know that fishing is not part of your deal. I know it's not part of your deal, and I know it's probably not part of most of you, but these people fish on this river, and to not provide that sort of amenity when you're spending this kind of money, to me, is really a short-sighted plan. Sorry. I know it's a small cost to do it and move it up by the Perry Creek opening, for all I care, but somewhere you have to have some easy access and availability to fishing. And probably up, further up the road is better, because the fish cleaning station's around the corner, but...
Are you talking about the fish cleaning station up by?
Yeah.
The Heldon?
But at least they could park at the Anderson Dance Pavilion and not have to walk very far if they wanted to fish. A lot of people fish right down from the lift station, basically.
The Dance Pavilion to the fish cleaning station is a long way.
It doesn't matter, they'll have access, but they don't have, parking and fishing, you're asking older people that may be in wheelchairs to try to go down that bank and fish. It's not going to happen. And that, one of the things that we originally said was, we would have that fishing pier. We did. And so that's-
I guess I see both sides of it. Number one, I don't like the idea of the pier. And I was in some of those public meetings about how high the pier would have to be. And then you also think about how much line you'd have to let out, or pulling a fish up that high. And then you even think the current, if you're-
I didn't say that was right, but they provided it nowhere.
If you're just saying that there would be a sidewalk or some area where it was easier to get down to go fishing, I mean, I understand that.
I mean, I don't think the fishermen are asking for a whole lot when you're spending 10 or 12 million dollars, to have some access along here. And north up there by the Flight 232 Memorial, to the north of that is pretty flat. You could put a trail down, it would be easy access. You could put some concrete down that would allow them to put lawn chairs and that. But it's hard to believe in this whole project, we haven't found a spot for people to fish. That's hard for me to understand.
Is that kind of right south of the bridge? Is that what you're talking about?
Right, at the Perry Creek opening, on this side of it.
On the west end of this development?
On the very west end of this development, yeah.
Tom, can you go to that?
I'm sorry, where?
To the west end.
Go up by the, where the-
Go back to the west end of the-
Go up where you're...
No.
Keep going.
Way too far away. Do you have anything that shows the Anderson-
First, the Anderson Dance Pavilion.
Yeah, that's what I just did.
You know, actually, if you look, I'm going to show you right here. On every slide, here is our park, right here. This is Floyd.
Yeah.
This is the Anderson Dance Pavilion.
And go right there to the west, right there, it's flat. People fish there all the time. We've never made it nice.
Project doesn't go this far.
I will say that we have not looked at that area as part of this project. I don't disagree with you.
Fishing was proposed down below. If you can't have it down below, then you need to extend this project to handle it, to do something. I don't know, I think you do, but-
I don't think it's out of the question to add a walk that can get down lower here. Like I was saying, we did not address an area farther to the west of this, so we didn't, you know, design fishing improvements. What we heard was, yes, some people fish here. There was some argument about where the best place to fish was. I relayed the information-
They will fish there yet, some people will.
Yep, some people-
But I'm worried about handicapped and elderly.
And, yes.
We took it away from a mountain riverside, which was a mistake. They used to be able to drive down there by that pump house, and they can't anymore. We took that out because we put a trail in, so...
The other piece that we talked about, which we felt was really important, was that we were taking away a 500-car parking lot and paving, and we were trying not to leave or design a lot more drive and paving. And with this area being so far from where we had parking, we were extending a road fairly, a fairly lengthy distance that wasn't serving that many people. So we didn't think it was the biggest priority, not recognizing that fishing is a priority. But what we were also saying is, are we, is this the right spot for that? Or does it need to go somewhere else? As I was saying, I think we could, you know, add this or incorporate to this as we finalize the design, as we move to the next step of design. You could definitely provide a more accessible route closer to the edge of the water. But bringing the drive in and bringing parking closer is something that you start to lose a lot of other features that you're designing into the park. Because there's, they're talking about, I think it's 150 feet deep or so there. So if you're taking out 40 or 60 for drive and parking, you start to lose area pretty quickly.
Well, maybe that's where, it's not a part of this scope, and I understand that, that we're talking way farther west. But you have an existing parking lot right there on the road just to the south of the bridge. You know what I mean, right before that curve? If you remember, I, no, it's probably not even on here, really.
Is it on here?
So go to, point to the Dance Pavilion.
Where, why am I not seeing it? There it is.
Yep.
And so, someone else know where I'm talking about? So if you go under the bridge, there's a curve that heads back up towards the interstate, and there's probably like a seven-car parking lot right there. If you developed a sidewalk, you could get a gentle slope down there and fish there. Obviously, it's not a part of the scope, but I'm thinking like, you have a parking lot already for seven cars. I remain, I'm guessing seven cars. And then you could make a, because there's that little inlet right there. I don't even know what that is, is that a pump house? I mean, it's-
I think so.
Where the Perry Creek dumps into the river.
So I don't know if you would do it there, you know what I mean? And get a, I'm just trying to think of a compromise where, at least then you have some parking already there. So I agree with you, I don't want you to have to build more parking and more road. I don't think that's the answer, but giving people access up there. And then you also, then another thing you have there is you're close to restrooms and everything else. So if they're fishing, they need to use the facilities, at least they're there. Whereas if you put it on the far, far south end, the east side of your project, then you're not close to parking, you're not close to a road, you're not close to restrooms, I mean...
Mayor and Council, Matt Salvatore Parks and Recreation Director. We can explore increased access to fishing, whether or not it's part of this project or part of a separate project, but the priority is that fishing, fishing is a priority on the riverfront, so we'll keep that in mind as we move forward.
And I would want to know the need. I mean, I don't know.
If you see-
I would say, I don't know how many people fish there. I go down there, and I do see people fishing, I do say that.
The mouth of the Perry Creek is a very popular fishing spot, along with the Floyd, where the Floyd meets the Missouri. So between there, those two locations, that's where it makes the most sense.
The one I'm talking about are-
Yep, yep. Yeah, mouth, where you're describing is the mouth of the Perry Creek.
Both sides of the mouth of the Perry Creek.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
I'm going to skip back through. So, in the eastern-
I think you're at the end of this one.
Yeah, at the eastern edge of the park. And then we have a couple views. One, looking to the west, where the Ferris wheel might fit. And as I was saying, the Ferris wheel is still very prominent, still very- We, sorry to cut you off. We designed the main trail to be 16 to 20 feet wide, and built with a cross-section that could handle bigger traffic. So if we need to bring, if we need to bring a stage through, a big truck through, we could bring that.
Are you planning on concerts there?
We want to at least keep that option open if there's, we want to design a flexible enough space that if you want to have a concert down here, you can totally do it. Smith Group DJR has kind of actually put together some preliminary layouts of where the stage could be, what the crowds would look like, where the food trucks would go.
The reason I'm asking is, they made that mistake in Stocker Park. We ought to not make it again and get the wiring in there ahead of time. This is what they've done, like at the ballpark later and those sort of things. You ought to have it done at the very beginning, rather than- This is what they've done, like at the ballpark later and those sort of things. You ought to have it done at the very beginning rather than try to figure out later with generators. It doesn't work.
And we have, we have included, um, in our budget numbers for power, for stage, food trucks, um, et cetera. Event.
The other thing that would be a cool idea that the mayor just kinda got me thinking about is down on that bottom side or anywhere throughout, and I don't know if they're doing this a lot. But, um, even like little power poles, I've seen those on like trails where you can plug in your phone or have stuff like that.
And we've looked at, um, including areas like that, whether they're plug-in pedestals, um, for food trucks or for vendors, if you had vendor tents. So there would be some areas like that as well. And we've, we've worked that adoro.
I just think having that throughout, cause I mean, if I'm way down on, by the dog park or something and I am away from my phone, or for my car, it's dying or something, it'd be cool to.
Yeah, especially in today's day and age when we're also reliant on that little.
Yeah.
Device.
How did you pretty much level South Sioux? That's a good plan, but.
Yeah.
I like how bleak it looks over there. It's colorful.
I was wondering if Lance had seen this or not yet.
Yeah, right?
We, yeah. All right, I'll keep going. Um, this is the view from Floyd. As we come around the corner and we look to the west, this is where the Ferris wheel would look like. So one of the other things that came up during this process that I wanted to share with you, um, was we were asked to develop alternatives to the Ferris wheel. And as I mentioned, we came up with a couple of ideas very, very much in the beginning of the project. One of those was the, the idea of exploration ridge, which really stuck through the, the entire process. Um, but we never really came up with another icon that was more than the Ferris wheel. It's, it's a, it's a big task. Um, so we actually, so we actually took the idea and we put it out to our whole company. Our company's about thirteen hundred people, and we held an internal design competition. And they brought forth about twenty different teams, um, from around the country with different ideas. Um, and we presented the, the top few to the steering committee and to Matt. And we felt that these are potential alternatives that we could work into the design. Um, we are not asking for approval of one of these. Um, we are asking for approval of the overall schematic design, and this is something that in the, the first phase of the next, of design development, we would determine if we were going to move forward with one of these or with the Ferris wheel.
This would be instead of the ridge.
Instead of the Ferris wheel. Instead of the Ferris wheel. So the, the first idea was playing off of, um, the monument that was here before, um, creating the, the three arches that was there. Uh, creating a vertical element. Um, it's forty or fifty feet tall that you could see from the highway, that forms an interesting canopy, um, that you could interact with. It also has a potential fountain with it. It could be lit up at night. It could be different, um, in different seasons. We would, of course, as a first step, if we were going to do that, we would explore how a fountain works. Um, we would work with a fountain consultant. We're doing that actually on several projects right now. Um, so that first step is kinda validating how that all goes together. It would probably, how water works might change a little bit from this. This was a competition entry. The second was that we would do some sort of a, a tower element that could be lit. And what we really liked about this concept was that this could be something interactive. This could be something that you could control with your phone. So you could come to the park and there could be a light display there. And if you could, if you could go on your phone and say, there's, maybe there's twenty choices of what the lights could be, and you could, you could punch one in and they could be the, the blue lights that day. Or they could be a seasonal light, or you could make it light up in a pattern and control how they turned on and off. And that could be something that could be used throughout the park. What we liked about both of these ideas is, like where I left the Ferris wheel, they fit into the overall context. As I said, if, if they don't happen as part of Phase One, or they don't happen at all, the, the design of the park still works. They're supportive within the design that we have. So we took just one of these to see how it would fit in replacing the other fountain that we had designed. Shows what that might be like behind the, or behind the Floyd Pavilion. And what it might look like, um, viewing it from overhead. So imagine driving by and you'd be able, it's tall enough that you could see it. You have to be about forty or fifty feet tall to see from the highway. Um, it could be lit up. Um, it could change over the seasons. It could be done with, um, inscribed with a story. You know, we could tell a story with it. We could look at the patterning of it. Oops. So base budget, we've divided our budget up into two things. Um, first, a base budget, and second, an additional features budget. I'm gonna walk through what that includes. I've given a quick verbal description here, base budget of about six point five million. So that shows what you see on this drawing. And if you look really quickly at this drawing, it looks like the whole park. Um, but what you see is we've laid out the walks, we've laid out most of the planting, we've laid out the earthwork, we've put in some of the storm and, and water services. We have the trail in there. We have key sidewalks and lighting. So it's really the bones of the park. And then we've added to that. Additional amenities, and these I've outlined and numbered. So these are amenities that would happen on top of that. So we've, we've allocated an area in the previous plan for the Floyd Pavilion. But we realized that what we develop and how, how big this park becomes is somewhat contingent on the funds that we raise. So what this gives you the ability to do is design a full park, design a full trail, have these spaces, and then phase in some of these different elements over time. If we, we are looking at the potential of, maybe Phase One is the area outlined in green, that that could be the central civic area. And maybe we build all of those facilities in the beginning. But our first, our first task, our first goal is to really set all that up to be able to happen. So that's why we've, we've approached this from a, a base items and then an overall, or base items with amenities plus.
Can you stay there a second?
Yeah.
This is totally backtracking, and I apologize, but I can see it a little clearly with this one. Can you show where the trail's gonna go?
Mm-hmm.
The bottom rate of that.
The trail?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the, the existing, or the trail that's under construction right now comes under twenty-nine and will be built to about here.
Is it, yeah.
And then.
Run it on the other side of twenty-nine, where's it gonna be?
On the other side of twenty-nine?
Yeah.
Oh, it'll cross the river about right here.
And then go north along?
No, no.
Goes farther south along.
That's a trail that connects you down to Chautauqua. There is no connection up above yet.
So in the park, the trail will wind through here?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I was talking on the other side. I was curious where it goes on the other side.
Over here.
No, it goes across, there's a bridge over the Floyd, and then you're gonna go through the old Stockyards area.
That's what.
You're gonna go underneath, uh, the interstate by the railroad bridge, and then you're gonna connect to Chautauqua Park.
He's asking, how does it connect to the Floyd Trail now?
Oh, it doesn't connect now.
You don't have a plan for that yet.
No, we have, we, well, I have a preliminary plan, but we don't have a design.
You go up the other side.
So it would connect, we would wanna connect, uh, to four, where the Floyd Trail ends now at Fourth Street.
That's what he's asking.
Yep, so we'd want to go both, both directions. And that would eventually go all the way to the plywood trail.
Yeah. Cause I was just thinking too.
That's not in the plan.
I was just thinking too.
That's not a part of this project.
I know, I know. I was just thinking back to the fishing side of it. That's a question. Well, can you connect to the trail side of that? And have a parking lot on that side or somewhere, you know what I mean? And just seeing that picture got me thinking, well, if you, if that's a really big fishing spot too, and if you wanna do one fishing on this end as opposed to the other. I don't know. I was just thinking while you were going through it, sorry. Can you continue?
Okay. Do you, do you need me to go through any of the trail in the park?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay. So as I was saying, these, these numbers, they identify amenities that we're talking about that are adding on from that, that base cost. And that really gives the overview of the park.
Do you have a book that says like the Stockyards Gardens costs so much?
Do you have all that?
Yes. Yeah, I'm not being, well, I am being critical. I'm sure some of you guys have seen this. I have not. This is my first rodeo. And then we're supposed to vote on this today, which I'm not ready to vote on. I wanna see that, the eight and a half million dollars and where you're spending it. I think it's, would be somewhat irresponsible. I know you guys on the Parks Board already have that. I understand that, but we've not, I've not seen this before. And I certainly haven't seen any budget numbers, so the next item up, I, I hope the council agree. I'm gonna vote to make a motion that we defer for a week. And, and we get a packet that we can re, spend some time with and look at. Is that possible?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm.
I mean, we didn't have it part of this presentation, but we have all those numbers.
Right.
Yeah.
But before I vote on it, I'd like to see what you're talking about.
So you wanna back up a couple of slides, Tom? So yeah, that slide right there. So with those different amenities, we kinda put a dollar amount to each of those ones.
That's what I'm assuming. I assume you got a price for one, two, three, four.
For grant writing purposes, for fundraising, naming rights, we wanted to be able to package those things to be able to pay for them, so.
That's why, I just wanna see it, that's.
Sure, no problem at all.
And if you could pull with that too, I don't know if you can guess this, um, or anticipate, I'm sure you can to some degree, of what could be offset through grants or different.
I have a grant matrix that we put together as well.
You know what I mean? So when we are looking at the numbers the mayor's talking about.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I can say, oh, I really don't like that for that price tag, but then you say, no, don't worry, this is probably gonna be offset by a grant.
Right.
Perfect. Okay.
And donations too.
Any citizen concern, anybody from the audience wanna be heard on the, well, not, anybody wanna be heard on this particular item? Okay, if you wanna be heard on this item, come to the microphone, state your name and address and.
My name is Gina Trudeau, and I live in Riverside. Um, my question is for this project, will this allow the fireworks to come back to the river? Where, you know, the bridges and, I mean, cause people from South Sioux and Sioux City both like to enjoy the fireworks at the river.
That's a council decision that will have to be made because we ban them in all parks. It has nothing to do with this plan necessarily. That would be something the council would have to agree with.
I was just wondering, cause I, I just feel that, you know, if you're gonna make it a huge park like this for families to enjoy, they can have cookouts, you know, and.
Okay. Good question. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Do you need the address?
Anyone else be heard on this particular item? I'm gonna move eighteen motion to accept in the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the design of Chris Clarkson Park Riverfront Development Project. I'll move we defer for one week.
Is that a reasonable amount of time? Is that, obviously you can get that, you can get that to us right away.
We, we have that information already. It just wasn't included in this presentation. And I would think you'd want a little bit of time to take it in that you wouldn't get during a presentation anyway. So yeah, that's not a problem.
Thank you. Nice job. Call the roll, please.
Gretkin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. That was, good job, good presentation.
Thank you.
It's an exciting project. It's, uh, everything we were hoping, hoping it would be. You know, when you come into Sioux City, you just wanna show off the riverfront, and I think that's what this design does, so thank you again.
Was that big sculpture, that steel sculpture, Moore's head, or who?
I did. I had the earlier one today, didn't I?
If the mayor wants any more terms, we're gonna have to evolve the statute.
Citizen concerns, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and what you'd like to talk about, please. Anyone be heard?
I am here on a different.
So will you state your name and address again, please?
Gina Trudeau, and my office that I'm, um, concerned about is at seven thirty West Twenty-first Street in South Sioux. Or do you need my home address?
No, it's, we're, it's fine. Go ahead.
Um, the reason I'm here today is I, um, work for Gretkin Rentals. We're a rental company, and I pay all the bills. And I did receive a bill for rental permits in November, and on every single bill that I've received, um, it has a new due date, okay? And the, the purpose of this quorum that I'm part of right now is that, um, I paid this late, not realizing that it was actually late until I found out that I am being zapped with seven hundred and eighty dollars in late fees. Now, you can say, okay, you started the billing in November. However, my November bill says is due December, um, sixth, and then I get a bill in, at the end of December for January, which says it's due in February. And then I get another bill in February saying that it's due in March. Nowhere on any of these bills does it show that you will receive a late fee? Does it show that there is a municipal code that you need to look at? It does not show that you, your licenses or your permits will be revoked. And it's very concerning because although I don't own these properties, I pay the bills for these. And my budget does not allow for this much in late fees. Meaning that it could take away from painting a house, putting a new roof on a house. Um, do you get what I mean? Okay. So in March, I paid my late, I paid my permits, okay? They're already paid. But after I paid them, I get this letter stating that our permits are probably revoked. So I called down there and I said, okay, I paid these. You never said that they were gonna be revoked. The lady says they're not revoked. Your permits are fine, okay? But on here, it gives a municipal code about the late fees. It gives when this bill is due. It tells about every property getting charged fifty dollars to reinstate their, um, permits. It tells about how the city is gonna require that every single house be re-inspected in order to gain those permits. But this is after the fact, okay? I asked the lady when I went to pay these bills, where on these bills does it show that there's gonna be a late fee? Or that all of these consequences will happen? She says you have to read it in the municipal code. I said, well, how am I supposed to reread it in the municipal code when it doesn't even show that on here? You know what I'm saying? I, we had some things that come up this last year that, you know, took quite a bit of the budget. So I thought, being that every single one of these came with a new due date on it, I had time to revamp my budget and to get it fit in. I mean, I guess, you know, I don't mind paying a late fee, but not one and a quarter times the amount the original permit is. So the permits are twenty dollars, the late fee is twenty-five. That's a hundred and twenty-five percent. I mean, what is that money being used for, you know? I mean, why is it so obsessive? That's what I would like to know.
Padmore, do you wanna answer that?
I can try. Maybe Nicole can help. Um, it's just established by ordinance. Um, staff doesn't have the ability to waive the penalty once the, once the deadline is passed. Um, it's, it's part of our rental inspection code of our ordinance.
But we do get our rental properties inspected. We comply with everything.
Yeah, this is the permitting that's required every year to have a permit to, to rent.
And we've paid it for over forty years. This is the first time I've run into this situation. I'm asking for this fine to be less, or the late fees to be less, because seven hundred and eighty dollars, when my original bill was five hundred and eighty, I have to turn around and pay another seven hundred and eighty.
And what was the late fee? Where, where did the seven hundred and some come from? That's where I'm still.
She didn't pay it till March.
Twenty-five dollars per house.
Oh, per property.
We have thirty-two.
And you thought with the bills, when they kept sending you, it's due February, it's due March, that they were just giving you an extension or just putting you on notice?
Just putting us on notice that, yeah, these bills are due. We know that we pay these every year, but this year we, I'm asking that you give me a lesser fine.
Does it say anywhere, anywhere that there's a fine or a late fee?
I don't know if it does in the invoice. It, it is in the code.
No, not on the invoices, and I'll, I'll let you look at one if you'd like.
And also I would add, to do that for one property, we would have to change the. And also I would add, to do that for one property, we would have to change the code of ordinances and do it for everyone.
No, I, I understand that part. I'm just saying, I wonder when we send invoices, if we could at least include that in the future, or I wonder if that's necessary or needed, you know what I mean? Just so that they're aware that, hell, I wouldn't know how to look up the code or if it didn't reference the code or...
Exactly. That's exactly my point.
And I understand that. So I guess as a council member, I would say I understand your point that we should maybe spell it out clearly on that invoice of what those are going to be.
Exactly. I mean, if this is the consequences and...
And, and I understand, but I also think it's incumbent upon you to pay that. And, and I think it's reasonable to know that if we send you a bill every single month, but it's not just saying, hey, by the way, whenever you can get to this, that would be great, that there's not gonna be a penalty. So I mean, I, I would not be inclined to waive the...
I actually...
But I'm just saying, I understand.
I actually would expect a late fee, but not a hundred and twenty-five percent of what the original permit is.
And I don't know, do we know if that's similar or other...
It's laid out, it's laid out in code. I just laid it out in code.
I mean, for example, my renters, let's say they pay five hundred and fifty dollars in rent, okay? We're only allowed to charge them a forty dollar late fee per month. No more. Cannot do any more than that.
Based on what?
I can't, based on the law. I can't say, okay, I'm gonna charge you six hundred and eighty-seven dollars because that's a hundred and twenty-five percent.
Of what you pay.
Of what you pay for rent. And expect them to pay five hundred and fifty plus a six hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That's pretty much what you're expecting here. And I'm just asking you to re-look at this bill or this municipal code and what is the reasoning behind it? I mean, I don't understand it.
Yeah, compliance, I would say.
Yeah, exactly.
What's that?
Compliance.
Compliance.
You're obligated to pay the permit fee, and if you don't pay it by a certain date and time, then you...
But I think it should've been spelled out, is what I'm saying. Instead of getting this in March, after the fact, getting this letter, and then this letter spells it all out. You know what I mean? Let the owners know that, hey, this is the consequences if you don't do this by this certain date. There's not even anything on these bills that say specifically that they will be revoked if not paid by January thirty-first.
Okay.
Nothing.
We're not, just so you know, we, we can't solve the problem today. Bob, do you wanna get everybody, Nicole, the code section and that?
Yes.
And, and we'll look at it. But I would say the problem's gonna be this year. If we waive it for you, we're waiving it for everybody. We can look at it going forward, but we certainly cannot, or at least I wouldn't, because then I'd feel guilty to those people that paid it.
And then I would say too, but I'm, but I do agree with you that we should be able to put on there, this is what it is. These are the penalties, you know, just so you're aware of your rights and of those things. I agree with you there, but I also agree with the mayor that can't go back on that, and, and you know what I mean? If we can't do that for everyone, so I, if nothing else, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Okay.
Is this the first time, though, that this has happened for you? So the past several years, you paid before January one?
Yep.
So you got a good payment record, good payment history.
Yeah.
So this is the first time you've went past January one, cause you would know that it has to be paid by January one.
I didn't know that specifically until I got paying it in March and then bam, hit me right in the face that this was due January thirty-first.
January thirty-first or January one?
Thirty-first.
Padmore?
Thirty-first.
January first. Here's what the code says, in the, in the event that a property is determined as rental property has been occupied without a permit, which would've expired December thirty-first, for a period of greater than ninety days, the landlord will be required, register the rental property and pay a registration fee plus a penalty of twenty-five dollars.
Greater than ninety days.
But didn't you say if the property's been unoccupied?
Rental permits which are not reviewed before March sure, renewed before March first will be revoked if the rental for, rental permit fee, in fee, and pay a penalty of twenty-five dollars. So March first for, for existing...
Because we're supposed to pay them by December thirty-first.
Yes.
And that's the ninety days.
Right.
Actually, it's sixty days for...
Yeah, that's only sixty, yeah.
No, cause it's due December thirty-first.
And there's a graduated scale, right, there's a graduated scale for penalty.
Get us this, we'll, we'll look at it, but they're gonna have to give us a memo on it, so, and so we can look at it.
Okay, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else be heard?
Pete? Uh, just real quickly, there was a request uh by Jessica earlier in the week to remind everybody at the request of Captain Tom Standish from the Sioux City Fire Rescue regarding next week is Severe Weather Awareness Week, March twenty-sixth, starting today actually, through the thirtieth, there'll be an annual tornado drill next, uh that'll take place on Wednesday, March twenty-eighth at ten AM, and the fire department's very active uh in this um awareness week every year. And they'll be doing a number uh of different uh warnings and awareness for each week, uh or for each day of the week, Monday severe thunderstorms, Tuesday weather warnings, Wednesday tornadoes, Thursday family preparedness, and Friday flash flood, floods. So they're very uh conscious about uh trying to provide the information that will help all of us be prepared during severe weather and, and they ask that uh council just remind uh the general public and everybody here, so I, I wanted to help them out with that. And then quickly, I did attend the Crescent Park Neighborhood Coalition last Thursday. It's held the fourth Thursday of every month at um the Hy-Vee Marketplace uh at seven PM, and the police were represented. Maybe a half a dozen people, had a nice conversation, a number of issues that uh they brought to my attention that I will follow up on. And, and they are looking for, and that's what I wanted to share, they are looking for uh other council members as well to participate to uh see if they can get more city staff out on a, on a semi-regular basis to just share the services that the city provides. They're, they're concerned that a lot of what the city does isn't uh, uh information isn't available, and so I would just, uh, I told them I'd bring it up, let you know I was there and, and let you know when it was, and if you're so inclined, you may wanna stop at one of their meetings in the future, so...
After taxes and let me know.
Yeah, I will. I will.
And I like going to those things, but I never know when they are. Is there a memo we can get about the different neighborhood, neighborhood coalitions to put it on or...
Pete has it.
Actually, yeah, I, I dropped one off, uh you may still have it. Um, at the um event they had the first or second week in January down at the, the family uh, down at Longline Family Rec Center, but they had a family night out.
Oh, I remember.
And they just printed a new brochure. I'll see, I think I still have some more at home, I'll bring one you want. And it's got all the coalitions and it'll show their dates and times and... Okay, I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Um, you give me that look. Funny. Um, I would just say uh a couple of short things. Number one, I was able to attend uh the Sioux City Growth Organization Corporate Connections, their kind of annual update of where they have been and where they hope to go. In the future, I represented council there, uh it was last week. And uh it was just nice to kinda hear an update of where they're going, as well as, as part of the strategic plan, what they hope to um initiate or enact in the future and, and focus on. It was nice to hear some of those ideas and see where they're going to go. And oh, there was one more. Oh, yeah, congratulations to the Metro, right? The hockey team won the national championship. I think they won that today or earlier this morning, so congratulations to them, they did it. Right, I should be asking you guys, right? Am I, right on that?
They were uh in the loser's bracket too, weren't they? So they probably had to play if...
They just did this team in the pool, eight to one, they were after down low two, and they came back to win.
Wow.
Good deal.
Yes, sounds like a, a great time, and I would just...
They did?
Oh, yeah, you posted about it, you posted, they won on the road.
They did, they did. I have nothing further, Mayor. I'll move, we adjourned second.
Moore?
Pardon?
Moore?
Well, I thought you wanted more.
No.
I? Sorry. Um, I?
Waters?
Just...
Um, uh, I. Apparently you only can get the I's right.
Thank you.